Present.
Here.
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 Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to discussion and action. Normally, we don't do those, but when they're important, we try to make sure those go to the regular board meeting, but because of the importance, we're bringing it to the meeting tonight. So, item A, consider the purchase of skid steer and dump trailer. And I believe, Ryan, you, Ryan Roscoe, Mr. Predney, Mr. Bowers. Sorry, I know you guys all from first name. Yeah, all right.
I'm here as building and ground supervisor. Bring up a Bobcat. I've been at the district for 30 years. I don't think there's ever been a year that we've never said that we needed a Bobcat or a skid steer. Between Roscoe, between Bundy, Conan, Bundy, and extra above and beyond his contract, me bringing my tractor in and tell her all the time, not all the time, but I brought it in quite a bit. Like I said, Roscoe, there's never a day that goes by that we don't need a skid steer. There's some questions that were asked on an email I can answer. Is this replacing a current piece of equipment or adding to our inventory? It's actually adding to our inventory. We have never had a skid steer, and we've never even rented a skid steer since I've been here. We've had Roscoe come in, I come in, or Bundy come in, above, above, above and beyond his contract. For equipment specifications, we add in our needs discussed before approaching the dealer. We as custodians all got together back at the break room table. Three of us went down besides me to look at skids we talked about we needed for attachments, what size skid steer we needed to do the jobs that we needed to, the lifting power that we needed to lift. So, we did all talk about it before approaching the dealer. What was the specification sheet sent to multiple dealers for consideration competitive bidding? I think we sent sheets out. We went to Cat, Bobcat, Kubota, got all three bids. Roscoe took the initiative and did a lot of that because he knows more about skids than I do. And the prices were kind of comparable. The reason we went with Bobcat or got the Bobcat bid and stuck with the Bobcat bid because it was cheapest, the municipal discounts were the best. Bobcat's discount was the best, and they've dealt with us in the past, or not dealt with them, but I got bids from them before and are really good to work with. Who were the bids sent to and who responded? Bobcat, Kubota, Cap, got all three bids. They were all kind of comparable. The reason I got bids was I was given a budget number, so I figured with our budget number, we can probably get a skid steer and a dump trailer for that money. So, we looked into prices and stuff. We looked at the T-66, which was a lot, probably $10,000 to $15,000 more. And the only reason the T-595 was brought up by a Bobcat dealer because he says this was Bobcat's number one skid steer for years, and they replaced it with a T-66. The T-66 is what we wanted, but it was like $15,000 more than the T-595. The T-595 is the same lifting power, same horsepower, but a lot, lot less expensive than the T-66. We didn't need a skid steer on steroids. We just want a skid steer that'll do what we need to do for our district. And as far as what we need a skid steer for, I can go on and on and on for days and days. Unloading semi, salt. Just for instance, two years ago, we had a semi come in with 12 pallets of salt. I had to grab four guys. We had to unload 49 bakes to a pallet, all 12 pallets off the semi by hand. Not saying that we can't do it, but workman's comp, we don't want somebody getting hurt. Moving brush, mowing trees, moving bleachers with forks, mulch for the school. Every year, graduation, we mulch. We've been buying it by the bays last year because of COVID. Usually, we get it by the pickup. We can get it by the semi load hauler, or either use a dump trailer, use a skid steer to spread the mulch. Clearing off sidewalks in the winter time. Bundy does come in and do it. We do the sidewalks, but after the snow gets so deep, the corners get built up, the sidewalks get kind of narrow. We need a skid steer for widening out the sidewalks, moving excess snow that's in the corners of the buildings. Moving dirt, unloading semis with forks. I mean, the construction hit. I mean, without the lull, thank God for the lull, having the construction here, the lull that we would be lost without it. The discus golf, we now take care of all the discus golf, the walking trails, cross-country trails, the bike track, McKinney's bike track owner at the school, building berms and doing stuff. I brought my own tractor in last year and helped them all that, donated my time. I can go on and on about how many times we could use a skid steer. There's not a day that goes by that we don't need a skid steer.
Are there any questions?
When these construction projects are completed, are the maintenance needs and the ability to have a, you know, have a blade asset that's small enough to get into smaller areas going to change from what they are now? And if they are, can you talk about that a little bit?
As far as given the smaller areas with a skid steer?
Just what, how are maintenance needs going to change when the construction projects are done, and what might that look like?
We've got the dirt bucket, the snow bucket, and forks for the attachments we have got quoted on for the skid steer. Getting into the corners, I mean, as far as after the construction, I mean, even before the construction, then you ask Roscoe, some team times we needed a skid steer. He come in, I come in with my tractor, Bundy come in. As far as, you know, getting around and stuff, a skid steer's a lot more feasible getting around than a tractor, getting in the corners, getting around faster, dirt, moving dirt, trees. Yeah, it's just so feasible than a tractor.
Question about the budget and the process. This was not in the budget previously, is that correct?
Nope. Just, just to be transparent with everyone, the intent, if it were approved, would be paid through referendum contingency money and equipment to do maintenance following a building project is authorized.
May I ask a couple of questions? Apparently, the three of you got in a vehicle and went traveling around to visit dealerships. And you three have decided that you want to go with a Bobcat. You have gotten a proposal to us. I don't know what the retail is. It's just got something, a number circled, handwritten, so I don't know how much of a discount we're getting. You're telling us we're getting a huge discount. It's one dealership, and I'm aware that there's more than one Bobcat dealership out there.
We went to three.
Is there a reason why we don't have bids from the other three Bobcat dealers, and can I see those bids?
Yeah, we do.
I really would like to see. I've asked for this. Honestly, truthfully, folks, that's my email that you read, and I got no responses back from those questions, so I'm asking them tonight. Is there a reason why I didn't see the other three bids? Because I know there's others on the ground that other dealers-
Well, there is a reason why I gave you the bid I gave you, because that was the cheapest bid that we got.
I'm not aware of that. I asked those questions, and I wish I could have gotten that before you and I spoke tonight because that's what I asked. Did you send it out, and where did it go to? That's what I asked.
I guess, I guess I'll have to give it to you. Thank you.
Just, yeah. Is there a reason why we can't-
Just one, one second. So, point of order, just.
So, just to be clear here. So, we don't have bids, but you have quotes, correct? Okay. So, did not go through, and we did not do a request for proposal for bids. You received quotes from the dealers that you went to, is that correct?
Yep.
All right. I'm going to ask that we send it out for bids. I don't see an urgency on this topic. It's not a budgeted item. It's not something that we've ever discussed. I know that we have a policy that says we have to have at least two bids from dealerships. I know there's, these items are on the ground at different dealerships I've talked to. They are willing to provide us with a bid if we were to contact them. They're saying, nobody's contacted me for a bid.
Contacted who?
I'll start with Tri-State down in Hudson. They have two of them on the ground right now.
I contacted Hudson.
I don't have a bid from them because I talked to them. They would love to submit a bid. They said they haven't submitted a bid. I don't know.
What do you want from me?
I'm asking for bids.
Okay, I'll get you the bids.
We're asking for a $70,000-
So, just, 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 just one second.
This does not benefit the kids. Your comment, it does not benefit the kids, it does benefit the kids.
Just, just one second. Just one second. So, we've, we've made our discussion. You guys have presented.
Yep.
We've got your questions. Is there any additional questions from the board?
Again, I guess about the process that it's brought tonight for action. Is there pressing, is there a reason that it's brought for action tonight? Is there concern or pressing?
So, I can speak to that, that, you know, based on the information that, that Mr. Predney brought back, that the supply chain was such that a prompt order would increase the likelihood that we'd be able to have the equipment at some point next, next school year, and that not placing an order meant that we may not have it in a timely fashion. Again, just based on supply chain. I know Mr. Johnson's saying that the dealer had them on the ground, and I don't know if they were spoken for, if they were ordered for somebody or not, but that's seemed to be the consistent message that you got. If you're going to try to get one of these things, you gotta order it promptly.
They're one of the only ones that are on the ground with the T-595, and the dealers do have them, but not many of them. If you don't jump on it, you're, you're going to end up not getting one. No reason we jumped on it always because I've been asking one for 30 years. We just, the school district could never afford one, and I understood that. But if there's a little bit of money left that we can go buy one, now's the time to do it, or we never will get one. That's kind of why I'm pushing for it.
So, the next part that we would do is, if there's no additional questions, I would ask if there's a more, is there another question?
I do, yes.
Yes.
I feel I would like to continue.
And what question do you have?
The statement would be, there is several T-595s on the ground. I know at least three different dealerships on the ground. It is no longer a product that's made anymore, so any of them that you will find are on the ground. So, there's none of them in their chain line coming out to dealers. So, if a dealer were to have one, they are more than happy to quote right now, today, on, for us, if we were to approach them for a quote. But there is no more in the chain line to come out. You cannot order one. So, if you want to buy that item, they're there to buy right now. If we made a decision in two weeks to buy one at our next board meeting, we could do that and still send out the bids and follow our procedure for sending out bids. I'm real concerned that I didn't get to see the bids and that we didn't actually really send out the bids. So, that's all I'm asking us, is just to pause. It's been 30 years in the making. We're here. Two items we have to decide. Number one, should we be buying one of these items? And number two, how should we be buying that item? And I'm questioning how we're buying it. I'm not questioning the fact that we have, that we're going to do it. My question is how? Because I feel that we owe it to the taxpayers to make sure we're getting the best competitive bid.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I just have a policy question. Does this have to be based on policy sent out for bid, Mr. Arslan?
We could, we could, yeah, we could buy it as part of a referendum contingency purchase. So.
Then I will make the motion that we go ahead and purchase based on the quotes we receive and take the vote out.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We'll need a roll call vote? Oh, is there any more discussion? Were you, your motion was for the, for the whole, the motion's for the entire, yep.
I have a couple of questions, or just clarification, I guess.
Yes.
The dump trailer being what it is, do you have a means to pull and use that?
We have a three-quarter ton truck.
And then also, within that, the skid steer, if you're moving between grounds, do you have a means to get it with the dump trail? Okay. Okay.
You have another one?
Maybe just on the, if it's quotes, do we have firm, like, you know, maybe those need to be more firm than just quotes if we're actually purchasing, you know? I don't know. Maybe it's, maybe it's correct from them, but is a quote going to move?
Well, the motion would be, as, if I'm correct, the motion is, as Michelle stated, would be as quoted, if I understood you right. So, it would be, have to, that's the motion.
I think the question to you might be, is there a date on the quote? Is there an expiration date on the quote? Is that?
That is true. If, if it would change, I mean, is there a timeframe? We should solicit more between the next board meeting? I mean, maybe it won't matter. I'm just curious. Go for it.
Well, we've been told we wait every, we go out to three of us at first, just for the, just for the machine. Trying to get through, save.
I think that's good, unless there's other contingency stuff that would be more precedence than that, but that would be wanted plus.
Jesse, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 No.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Bauer, Mr. Predney.
Thank you.
Moving on to presentations. And tonight, we have student staff community recognition. It's going to take me a little bit here. All right, so, Principal Shears come up, and we have Robert Thornley, Greta Linton, Joe Scafidi, Chris Knutson, Steve Fulton, Kyle Linton. If you guys could come forward.
Sorry.
And so, they're being recognized. This is our musical team, put on an amazing performance once again. Their dedication to our students is second to none. No one knows the countless hours it takes to put on a great musical production that many of us had the opportunity to enjoy. Thank you again for serving our students and giving them a memory that they will never forget. A special thank you to Mr. Thornley for the many years of service and sacrifice to provide this special opportunity to our students. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
All right, our next, Missy Geisregen, Regan. All right. And Tracy, am I going to say this right? Tracy Reikert? All right. Is she here?
Yeah.
All right. But I'm going to read what she's being recognized for. Tracy runs our school office with ease and kindness, bringing warmth to the building and everyone inside it, even when she was the only one in the office for the past couple of months. We can certainly count on her regardless of the, of the request, regardless of the time. We're humbled to work alongside such a dedicated staff member and appreciate her continued commitment to keep our school running smoothly. Thank you, Tracy. Mr. Hopkey, and we're going to recognize Missy Patchen, Tina Hanson, Brittany Gormong, Laurlyn Ekstrom, Mary DeNoyer, and Rhonda Carlton. All right. As they're coming up, I'll read what they're being recognized for. Spooner Elementary School Special Education Team has done a remarkable job this year with providing individualized instruction, academic and behavior interventions, managing students in crisis. They have constantly and consistently managed per professional schedules to meet student needs when staff members have been sick and jumped in to provide assistance when there's need. They have maintained composure in difficult situations. Increases in student performance academically and behaviorally are direct result of their efforts. Thank you. All right, Berghammer, we'd like to recognize Colin Carlton. Colin is a very dedicated teacher and active member on the PBIS team, serving as a tier two coach and is a member of the social studies team. Colin is a great teammate to other first grade teachers and is very well respected by all staff at Spooner, excuse me, Spooner Elementary School. He's a very important member of the PBIS team and is very active working with students that need some assistance with behavior strategies. Colin goes above and beyond to make Spooner Elementary School the best place it can be. He's actively involved in many family engagement activities and helped create many opportunities for kids and families to do special activities at home and school. We're very lucky to have Colin on our Spooner Elementary School team. Thank you all. All right. Moving to item B, referendum project update. I think Mr. Kunkel, is this you?
And, uh.
All right. And Lance, I think you guys have the next couple up there.
Yeah, so, good afternoon. We'll be providing an update on the construction projects, budget update, as well as additional contingency projects. So, in the past month at the elementary school, work that took place over the last month includes light fixtures, ductwork, diffusers, taping, mudding, painting, ceiling grid, metal linear ceilings, restroom tile, case work, controls, and low voltage wiring. The old fire ed office was also turned over for construction on March 14th. Since then, select demo, saw cutting, underground electrical, concrete patchwork, CMU walls, and then electrical and plumbing rough ends have all been completed. The hydronic piping was cleaned, drained, and refilled throughout the entire facility over spring break. Then HVAC equipment startup at the addition was complete with no issues. This month, work that we look to take care of includes taping, mudding, painting, light fixtures, low voltage wiring, restroom tile, quarry tile, carpet squares, razzle flooring, kitchen hood, case work, windows, and curb walls. We do expect to have this addition turned over by June 10th. Any questions on the elementary school? So, at the middle school, items completed at middle school addition include structural studs, sheathing, roofing, concrete, floor slab, metal studs, as well as electrical and plumbing rough ends. Then over spring break, at the antholes gym, we completed the taping, mudding, and painting at the fair out walls. Next month, we'll be looking to complete drywall, mudding, painting, electrical wiring, low voltage wiring, and ductwork at the addition. And we also expect to have that addition turned over by June 10th. Any questions on the middle school? Additionally, for district-wide bipolar ionization project, those components have all been installed and operational, with the exception of the middle school addition. Any questions on that scope? Okay. For the budget update, I'll turn it over to Lance.
All right, we're going to take that, and we're going to put that on file. And this will be the referendum construction budget update, item C. Thank you.
Well, good evening. Glad to be here again. So, I wanted to walk through and provide some more detailed budget updates from our last meeting. Lot of questions about where we're at with our referendum projects right now, and, and, you know, we have a number of contingency dollars that we can now utilize to reinvest in a number of different measures at the school district. And a lot of questions I've been asked is, why do we have contingency dollars left at this point in construction? And I wanted to talk a little bit about that before I get into the details of this sheet. So, if you remember back, maybe a year and a half ago already, we did a very competitive bid process for this referendum and had an exorbitant amount of interest in your school district referendum. I think we had about 130 different contractors and people interested in bidding. We received about 80 different types of bids through that process. That competitive bidding process started also on the right foot for construction. And I give a lot of credit to the project managers you have on site and your school district staff, Dr. Aslan, Mr. Kunkel there, and Mr. Kyle Gillis that have been working kind of tirelessly through this construction project to make sure we maximize taxpayer dollars. So, that's pretty much been our goal at CSATEN when we do referendum projects, that we want to look at maximizing the community investment referendum dollars in the district. So, that is why through that construction process and the management and the committed competitive bidding process of why we have, we're fortunate to have contingency dollars to reinvest in your schools. So, talked a little bit about this budget code, and I know you might need cheaters to read this, but I tried to blow it up a little bit bigger for you, so. This I wanted to leave with you is, shows a detailed overview of the budget and what every contract we have. If you look at, there's a budget code. The budget name is pretty much the bucket, if you will, where, you know, we assign contracts to. So, that's what we use for budgeting. So, you can see, you know, for instance, demolition, the next column is all our demolition contractors. We have our original budget column. Our projected budget is what our actual, what we're actually budgeting right now for construction. And the projected cost column is what is actually the contracted amount, including the change orders. So, for instance, you can look at cast and place concrete, budget code number three. You can see the projected budget is 312, and the projected cost is 295. So, we hold some of that, which I spoke about at other board meetings and meetings, that there's a variance in there. That's something Mr. Kunkel, Mr. Gillis, they project that we hold a little bit of variance for that budget code for cast and place concrete. If we have any existing conditions or anything that pops up, we have that budgeted for. And that's not accounted in contingency because it's accounted there. So, I wanted to go in depth a little bit to explain to you how that looks like on our budget sheet. Right now, we're sitting very good overall complete. The actual cost column is what we've paid to date to contractors. So, we're sitting at about 48, 49, 50% complete, and we can expect now, after spring break and these next month, to make a wide jump forward in percent complete because we accomplished a lot of stuff over that week. So, as you can see, just kind of rolling through this, you know, you can, I just wanted to leave this for you to review, but the main columns, the projected budget, projected cost column, everything we have at this point, you know, we are under budget, we're projecting to finish construction, and Mr. Kunkel said, opening up those buildings for you guys. And on the back side, you can see, I left out the contingency cost on this one, and that's a separate item, so that's not included. The contingency funds are separate from all that extra variance budget money that we have accounted for to, to take care of the in-place, any existing conditions that may pop up to finish the current construction projects. Is there any questions that I can answer on the budget? Or any, if you'd like me to go into more detail, like I said, I can leave this with you for review.
Are there any questions?
Do you talk a little bit about line 24? Sounds like asphalt came out.
Yeah.
Much different than had been anticipated?
Yes, thank you. And, and, and so, when we originally looked at adding some of the playgrounds and the bus routing areas, in that additional work that we talked about earlier that the board approved, when we sent that out for bids-
All right, so you have, are you the contingency projects recommendations? Is that both of you?
I'll let Mr. Conkle speak.
Oh, Mr. Conkle, all right, item D. Thank you, Mr. Conkle.
Thank you. So a few clarifications here, just want to let you know that if these are all accepted, we can, they're well within our budget to accept these additional contingency projects. Speaking with Dr. Aslan, future potential contingency projects aside from these, we'll likely wait till mid-July just to see where we're sitting. We'll have a very good idea of any unknowns by that point. And at that time, we'd meet with the board if you'd like to consider that for any potential additional projects that could be approved at that point. It is quite possible it would be summer 2023 work or work over breaks, but the base scope that was part of the referendum, we have no, really no concerns at this point that it won't be complete by the end of the summer. So the first one is high school gym scoreboard video display combination. This was originally going to be a one-for-one replacement. After having the Daktronics rep on site and members from the staff, it was suggested and decided that we would bring this to you, it'd be a visual display board that'd be six and a half feet by 11 and a half feet, and that would be in the middle of the scoreboard at the high school gym here. The visual display could be used for stats, highlights, graphics, and advertising for games and matches. It'd also be used for graduation assemblies and any other gym events. That upgrade would be a to not exceed cost of 107,000. Next one would be HVAC maintenance scope. This would be work that's outside of the referendum, that would be existing equipment that was not previously identified. A lot of the costs associated with this scope is related to heat pumps at the high school, which anyways, that scope was determined during an audit as part of the service contract between Jamar and the district. This scope will need to be completed for the facilities to function as they should. So we do have availability in the referendum, so we could take that on as part of those costs. The known cost right now is 96,190 dollars. Actual cost could potentially go up once further investigation takes place. So last one I have for you would be resinous flooring at the elementary school corridors. The existing flooring is basically thin brick and grout. I've heard many complaints that the flooring is difficult to clean, as well as try and move carts around. It will not be, it'll also not be possible to match base material where new openings and infills are taken place as part of the referendum. The resinous flooring is an epoxy-based with color flakes and then grit. This flooring was selected due to its relatively low cost, durability, and traction when wet. As part of this cost, existing vestibules would receive walk-off carpet to cover the flooring at existing vestibules and then eliminate the need for mats. The scope is to not exceed cost of 150,000. We do have lump sum costs for the material to be installed, but not currently for the demo of base material. And that's just due to, you're going to get much better pricing doing that as time and materials versus getting a lump sum. So if you do have any questions now, feel free to ask. Any otherwise, if anything pops up, would like more details, feel free to reach out to Dr. Aslan or myself. Any questions at this time?
Brad, will we be able to have a written document with this on it that the board members can get a look at before they vote in a couple weeks?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could you have a, just a clarification thing?
Yes.
So for that thing that, the HVAC maintenance, you spoke, Jamar has the contract, so is that, they said they can do it as part of the contract, but it's also additional scope of what they have?
It would be addition into the service contract. That would not be part of their contract.
Okay.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Conkle? So what we'd be looking to is have a consensus to move this to the regular board meeting. Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item E, discussed revised ELA curriculum, and I believe that's Ms. Geese Regan.
All right, I think, can you see it? All right, so thank you. We have in the audience our committee, so at any time too, if you have questions, they're here to answer any questions about our work as well. So our work began this year at the start of the year. Most of our in-service time has been dedicated to doing this work. We had grade level teams collaborating and evaluating all the Wisconsin standards for English language art. So DPI, the Department of Public Instruction, updates those standards, and recently there had been some changes, so we looked at the updated revisions to that and updated our own curriculum that we're bringing forth to you tonight. So those standards are based on three criteria, endurance, which is the knowledge and skills that will last beyond a classroom and/or a course. So leverage is the knowledge and skills that cross over into many domains of learning and the readiness for the next level of learning, which is the knowledge and skills important for those subsequent years. The English Language Arts Work Group that we had, we had one representative from each grade level in grades 4K through 8. 4K, if you're wondering, those aren't part of our English Language Arts standards, so you'll see in our document that they're not included because they go off of the early learning standards. So a different set of standards than the Department of Public Instruction standards. So we had one special education representative from each building, our two high school English teachers, so we had two of the representatives, and our reading specialist. The process, we went through identifying the power standards. You'll see in the document, outcomes and benchmarks. Outcomes are the key concepts, and the benchmarks are what we assess to so we can determine how well they understand the concepts. From there, they unpacked the standards to learning targets for students to understand, and we looked at vertical alignment. So meaning, everybody from all grade levels looked at the standards to identify if there were any holes or gaps or overlaps, we like to say. Sometimes one grade level might have chosen a standard while the other might have chosen it too, so that's called an overlap and making sure we didn't have any of that. And sometimes making sure we don't have those gaps in our chosen standards. So moving forward, these benchmarks will be what the majority of our instruction time will be spent on, what is assessed, and what building teams will have data-driven decisions about, and what interventions will be based on. It is expected that every student will reach a high level of mastery or proficiency on these benchmarks. So that's what we're, that's what guides our work every day. Any questions for our work group? We have plenty of folks if you have any questions.
No questions.
Okay. So just looking for the board to make a motion to approve our outcomes and benchmarks, our curriculum that we bring forth to you today, our updated version.
So do we have a consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item G, discuss additional assistant softball coach.
Oh, we have, oh, we have another one. This is, it's a really important.
I missed one, my bad.
That's okay. Did you hear the committee members like, whoa, no, this next one's really, really important? They're holding their breath.
I tried.
Okay.
My bad.
Where is it?
My bad.
I don't know what I have going on here, so sorry, pushing too many buttons. All right, now, our next proposal is our ELA textbook adoption. So we are asking the board, we went through a lot of work unpacking these standards, and then we decided to look at some resources, so that work also began this year. With that, we had our big committee come together, and we looked at a number of resources that are available out there. We used a Rubrik evaluation tool that was created by the committee. We looked at a number of tools, and we honed it down to what we felt were really critical things that needed to align to some resources and that met students' needs. Of course, that's the most important part of it all. We scheduled and attended webinars on each of these resources. So the resources that we looked at, we looked at StudySync, we looked at McGraw-Hill Wonders, Amplify ELA, Amplify CKLA, ReadyGen, Springboard, and Benchmarks. So those are some of the resource or textbook companies that we called and attended webinars, asked them questions. Many of them sent us pilots or samples or online access, so folks had the ability to really dive into what each of them offered. A lot of our committee members had connections to other schools with their colleagues from other districts, and so they would ask questions and inquire how they liked the program, what it, what they saw in their scores. We looked at other districts' report cards and how things might have progressed for them. So tonight, we come to you recommending Benchmark Advance for grades 4K through fifth grade. So the reason for the Benchmark Advance, it aligns with our SASD curriculum in grades K through 5, but the really exciting part is it also had a nice 4K component. It aligns with the science of reading research. It has a really powerful standards-based reporting platform that's included, assessments near the format of the Wisconsin Forward Exam, and it's designed for remote and onsite learning. And foundational skill standards are covered in systematic lessons that develop essential background knowledge and content vocabulary. So really exciting because that's been our focus this year is that vocabulary piece For the upper grades, StudySync was something they felt aligned with our SASD curriculum in grades 6 through 11. It had a really rigorous writing and reading routines, which we've identified as a much-needed thing within our district. Embedded skills lessons, the skills lessons ensure students build foundational language and comprehension skills, plus reading, writing, research, and inquiry skills every day. Assessments, they had self, peer, teacher evaluations are embedded in every unit, provide teachers with a wide variety of short and longer cycle formative assessment options, which is also something we are really working on in the district. An end-of-unit summative assessments combine progress monitoring tools and targeted lessons for reteaching and remediation. And the big part, all of this was within our budget. So that's the exciting news. The cost is within our budget that the district had set aside from our district curriculum budget in our earmarked SRF funds. So tonight, we make a recommendation if you'd approve the adoption of the textbooks that we bring forth to you tonight. And if you have any questions, once again, we have this beautiful committee out here who, this work group that can answer questions.
Are there any questions? What is the, what is that cost?
Yeah, so the cost that we bring tonight is around 139,000, and that cost is for a three-year stock supply. So an annual was 110,000, where the three years, 139,000. So three years of digital and in-print materials.
I'd like to thank the committee for doing this, and I think to say that this is spread out over all, all the grades, that amount is spread out across all the grades.
Yes, that's 4K12.
Right, it is a good deal.
Yep.
A three-year deal.
Or 4K, sorry, 11, I should state that correctly, sorry. Yes, Terry?
I was just going to add, or ask, I guess, is it supplemental to the reading ELA curriculum and stuff that's already being used, or is it replacing?
This will be our core. This is our core resource.
That's what I, so what happens to all that stuff? Just goes?
Don't know that we really had stuff, folks. Just, it was all kind of bits and pieces of materials.
There's no other questions, looking for consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And now we get to letter G. Discuss additional assistant softball coach.
So a good problem to have lots of players out for softball this year, so. You know the number, Mr. Scherz, I don't, softball, how many, how many girls out for softball?
I'm glad you did.
What a great problem to have.
Looking for authorization to post for a second assistant coach due to the high number of girls out for softball.
Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Item H, discuss varsity boys hockey coach position.
So it's a position that we already have in our, in our handbook, but, you know, based on us going in a different direction than the Iceman Co-op, looking for authorization to post for a boy's head hockey coach.
Any questions? We have a consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Yep, I think that was all right, just making sure. Item I, discuss athletic training request for proposal.
Yep, so as we come up on the end of the long-term contract that we've had with Ascencia, just looking for some direction from the board, are you going to want to go out for on a request for proposal for athletic trainer services? And, yeah. It's been a long time, it has, and that contract was renewed probably four years ago, and it is coming, coming to an end, so.
Any other questions? Do we have a consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Yep, I think that was all right, just making sure. Item I, discuss athletic training request for proposal.
Yep, so as we come up on the end of the long-term contract that we've had with Ascencia, just looking for some direction from the board, are you going to want to go out for on a request for proposal for athletic trainer services? It's been a long time, it has, and that contract was renewed probably four years ago, and it is coming, coming to an end, so.
Any other questions? Do we have a consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
The only question is this, with the addition of a new sport, do we need to upgrade the R-?
It's been a long time. It has, and that contract was renewed probably four years ago, and it is coming, coming to an end. So.
Any other questions? Do we have a consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
The only question is this, with the addition of a new sport, do we need to upgrade the RFP? Because we're doing now hockey.
We would. We would need to include the sports that.
We'll probably see a little bit of an increase then.
Probably so. I would anticipate that. You know, we can't know for sure until we get proposals back, but it'd be a pretty safe bet. I can't speak to that. I don't know. That would, that would certainly make sense with our practice of having that service at home events.
We recovered at-home events.
Thank you.
There we go.
Thank you. That covered it all right there. Excellent. Any other questions with that? So we have that consensus to move that forward?
Yes.
All right. Excellent. Item G, discuss preliminary 2022-23 budget, and this will be Dr. Aslan and Trish's last good.
Yeah. All right. So I'm going to get us started here. So, wow. You know, if you went back and watched the video of the April 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting, it was a much different conversation about preliminary budget. And just a, you know, quick reminder for those that have served on the board, and Terry, maybe this is a new one for you, districts aren't required to do a preliminary budget, but we do that, we take that practice up so that when we offer contracts, we do it in good faith, that we have the assets on hand to support. The commitments that we make also gives us a good sense of our ability to produce a balanced budget, which we will need to have when we set the levy and have our annual meeting in October. So while not a required process, it's an important process. And if you were to watch that video of that April 2021 meeting, you would hear Mrs. Grindell say, "And we're confident that we have a balanced budget as we go into the 2021-22 year." Things really changed for a couple reasons that I'll explain. And I give you this information because it's important to know where we are as we talk about next year's budget. So as the process rolled forward after April last year, we know that when the biennial budget was finally approved, it did not include the $200 per student per year increase in the revenue limit that had been anticipated. That left our district with a shortfall of $250,000. In addition to that, the establishment of the voucher school within the boundaries of our school district was another $250,000. So we began the current budget year, a half million dollars off of where we projected, and it required a heavy draw on ESSR funds to balance that budget up. As we look to 22-23, you have some assumptions that I've included in there that we're confident will be the facts of the matter. We cast forward that half-million-dollar shortfall from this year into next year, and with that, we have done some preliminary work on our revenue limit, and we're confident that we will lose about $300,000 of revenue space in that. And that is largely because the volume of students that we lost during the COVID year, as many districts did, that student count figures based on a rolling three-year average. So we have that. We also know now as fact that we'll have an 8% health insurance increase, which is about $127,000. And I guess the positive news that I would give you with that is if we were still a standalone district and not a co-op, we'd be in the high 20s, low 30% renewal. So it's not good that we've had as large an increase as we've had. To give you some context, during our time in the co-op, we've had very small increases. But that is up for next year co-op-wide. So we know that we are going to have to, again, dig pretty deep into the ESSR funds to produce a balanced budget with a very, with no new revenue and some increased costs. So this is the, you know, we get into the unpleasant part as we do this. And I want you to know that we've been working on this preliminary budget since November. So lots of thought, lots of research, trying to establish different contingencies, and we, you know, we bring, although not a pretty budget, we bring one forward to you that we're confident produces the balanced budget that we ultimately need to produce based on the assets that we have on hand. So we know that inflation is high. We know that Consumer Price Index, which is the limit to the base wage for contracts beginning July 1, 2022, is 4.7 this year, so much higher than it's been in any year previous. And to give you a sense of what a 4.7% increase, it'd be at over a quarter million dollars for teachers only, and the cost of steps and lanes would be another $500,000 on that. So, you know, as we're, as we're seeing a number of figures that are in the red, that would drive it even deeper. And I, you know, the challenge is to try to find some balance because our teaching staff and all other staff have really done an outstanding job this year under very difficult conditions. And to do 4.7 for the teaching staff, you can see, would be well out of what we're able to afford and would make no allowances for other employee groups. So what we propose is a 2.3 wage salary increase across the board for all employee groups. No change in the health insurance deductible or premium percentages paid. And, you know, we have a fairly high deductible already. We don't think that it's time to look at an even higher one to bring that cost down. And, you know, here are some of the challenging pieces. To produce a balanced budget, we're going to have to look at a one-year freeze in lanes and staff movement for 2022-23. We, you know, we can't, we don't have non-cost things that we can do to give that back and make it equal. But we think we can, you know, we're confident what we can do is reduce the teacher contract days by one and increase the floating holidays for the classified staff by one as well. And that would be through the employee handbook revision that's going on now. So we know that we're into ESSR III. That's the last of the three ESSR programs as we know it right now. And we will take a very heavy draw on ESSR III to bridge our budget gap for next year and to continue those positions that we'll talk a little bit later about in this meeting this evening. What I want you to know is, back in May and June, we talked about ESSR, May and June 2021. We talked about the potential to have jobs that ran through the 23-24 school year. We know now that with our, with no new revenue on the state side, having to use that ESSR money to balance the budget, that we will have largely used that money up by the end of the 2022-23 school year. So we'd have about $90,000 left for 23-24. So largely expending that money a year earlier than we had anticipated. Questions of me for that part of the budget presentation? Yes, sir?
Regarding the freeze lane portion, that would be for an employee that has like six years or less, or how many years?
It would be for the teaching staff. There's a table in the employee handbook. So there's movement on that table from up and down. That's based on years of service in left and right, based on education, level of education attained. And, you know, what we're, what we're proposing here is that that's frozen for this next year at the 21-22 levels.
How much would that save by freezing it?
Half million dollars roughly. Other questions for me on this part of it?
Any other questions?
All right. In the memo that was provided in board docs, you can see we have our FUND 10 revenues at the top, and that's what we're projecting. And then our expenses are broke out by the object code. Our salaries and benefits are being our big-ticket items, which we included a 2.3 increase across the board for all staff with no steps and lanes. And then on the benefits, as you can see, we also included the 8% increase in health insurance. We are presenting a balanced budget this year with the use of the ESSR funds. And we'd be looking for you to move this to the regular board meeting for adoption of the preliminary budget. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Do we have a consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. That puts us now to item K.
Staffing.
Years, you're up again.
Yep. All right. The board was given a list of certified staff contracts to review. We're looking for approval to move those forward so we can disperse those contracts by the May 15 deadline per state statute. In the memo, it does say we're giving a 2.3 increase with no movement in steps or lanes and a decrease of one contract day. And this has all been factored into that 22-23 budget that we just went through. We'd be looking for you to move this forward to the board meeting for approval to issue those contracts.
Is there any questions on that? Do we have a consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you. All right. Dr. Aslan, item L, discuss the 2022-23 ESSR positions.
You have a chart in your, your agenda pack there. So almost a year ago now, we knew that the ESSR III funds were coming and that they would create opportunities for new positions in our district that we would not have been able to provide if they had to be funded through the general fund, FUND 10 money. At that time, when the positions were approved, when hires were completed, they were issued a one-year contract that indicated that their service had come to an end at the end of the current fiscal year, close of business June 30, 2022. In that discussion, we talked about the positions being reviewed by administration. They were new positions, and, you know, we could not know what we did not know at that point. So now we've got a year of experience with those positions under our belt, and we come forward with some recommendations for you based on those series of conversations and evaluations. So first, at the high school, the learning support specialist, the recommendation would be to not continue that position for 2022-23, and that be replaced with two part-time positions. One, that's English Language Arts and Drama, and some support at the alternative high school as well, and then keeping the health aid position. As we move to the middle school, the student support specialist would look to not continue that position and increase time in the media center, of the media center assistant to full-time, and also add a part-time general education paraprofessional with that. So I want you to know that when we talk about these replacements, that they are within what the expenditure would be for the position that we say we would not look to continue. Okay? So revenue neutral there. And the middle school, continuing on, learning support specialist, looking to continue that and the increased health aid time as well. Moving on to the elementary school, the student support specialist there, we would look to not continue that position, replace it with two-time, two-part-time general education paraprofessionals. An important note on these student support specialists, you know, we've had the good fortune in our district to receive a DPI mental health grant, which we know is $50,000 for two years. We also received another grant called the Kids Getting Ahead Grant that resulted in about just a little less than $26,000 coming to the district to support mental health. So we've had, we've been fortunate that we'll have some other positions to help meet those student needs. In the middle school, looking to continue again that health aid additional time. District-wide, we have one person in a buildings and grounds maintenance position, and we would look to continue that position. So questions of me regarding ESSR as we look at those positions for next school year?
Are those the same positions Mr. Hopkey spoke of two meetings ago, like shared positions between? You must know what I'm talking about.
Not, not ESSR. He was talking about early childhood special ed. Yeah, that's not an ESSR-funded position. That's, that's different money. Yes.
Then my question is, are those two part-time shared between the buildings or just two part-times that are part-time within those buildings?
Two part-times within the same building.
Is there feasibility to do crossover between? No?
No.
Are there any other questions? All right. So we're looking to move this to the regular board meeting. Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Dr. Aslan. Item M. Discuss proposed 22-23 school calendar. Dr. Aslan?
All right.
All right.
Well, for those that have been on the board for a while, you know, that we've received a lot of feedback in recent years about the calendar, really most significantly revolving around the fact that school year for students ends later here than it does for all the neighboring districts. So we certainly have kept that feedback in mind. And in addition to that, the administration developed a draft, shared it with staff, and then did a survey and got a significant amount of staff input as well. So what we bring for you to look at as a proposal is one that's really thoughtfully based on a lot of important feedback that's been received from parents and families as well as staff members. So you have a document in your package that has the current school calendar and the proposed school calendar on the same page in there. And, you know, a couple of things. One is, we would look to begin the student school year on the last day of August. So therefore, we would need a state flexibility waiver for that to start one day earlier, one day before the start of September. And we're very confident that that would be approved by the DPI, and that would be. And that would be, you'll see a piece in your material that talks about a request to have a special hearing in the 15 minutes preceding the regular April meeting here in a couple of weeks for that waiver. Also within it, you'd see some expanded professional development days before the start of the school year. That has been an ongoing piece of feedback that we've had over the years. And I will tell you, although it's been a number of years since I prepared to have students come in as a classroom teacher, I think I can pretty safely say everybody that works in the school feels that stress of getting ready in those short handful of days before the school year starts. So we think that adding more professional development days would really get towards that end of providing more time for teachers to work in classrooms. Based on the feedback received from the staff survey, the November break was important, as was a full week of spring break. So you'll see that that we've incorporated that in there. Also, just note that kind of tied to our preliminary budget and and to our contract recommendations that we put forward. Teachers would have one fewer contract days and support staff would receive an additional floating holiday as part of the employee handbook process. So ultimately, you see that the proposed draft would have students out of school about a week earlier than they are this year. And we'd have some professional development days at the end of the school year for teaching staff. And that's what we are proposing. What questions can I answer for you?
Any questions?
Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, I did neglect to mention that. So part of that would, you know, one of the one of the recommendations that came in would be to see we could lengthen the school day in order to to really make a dent in those hours of instruction. And so, you know, as we looked at that, analyzed it, adding six minutes in each of the buildings would get us a couple extra days. We'd run with one fewer snow days, which except for one year in my time here, would be a non-issue. And we've had additional had additional time on hand. So yeah, thank you for asking that question. Other questions?
Any other questions? All right, do we have?
So would we would we have consensus to have that hearing at 5:45 PM? Right here, immediately proceeding?
Yes.
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 Yes, that would be the consensus. We need to have a consensus to move it to the regular board.
Yeah.
So we have a consensus to move the calendar to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes, all right, thank you. Item N, discuss DPI flexibility waivers.
I think we've covered that one, Mr. Melton. And I guess one additional piece of good news that despite the the really difficult situation at the middle school in November into December, you know, because of the just really great work by the dedicated staff there and making that quick pivot to, you know, interactive instruction face-to-face, we will meet the the hours of instruction standard at the middle school this year. So certainly, we tip our hats to the middle school staff for that.
Excellent. Moving on to item O, discuss new Spooner High School course, English 11 for the 22, 23 school year. Mr. Shears and team?
So just to give you a little background, talked about a little bit here in our in our math courses and our ELA courses, trying to create a good foundation for our students. And we've done that with our math foundations, which we for especially our struggling students, we have a year-long course that prepares them and gets them through algebra. In English, we've done the same kind of thing with reading plus, thank you ladies. And again, we do the same kind of focus on students that are struggling. The second thing we talked about was building a solid foundation in our ELA program so that every student, especially nine, 10, and 11, have a solid foundation in English. And that's the last element of it is is developing an English 11 course that has the rigor that we'd want all students to have to be successful, whether especially if they're going to take an upper level or a college course the next year, that kind of thing. With that, these two amazing English teachers.
So Mrs. Heinz drafted a memo for you. I think that you probably all have access to it. That sort of describes why we came about this decision and how it just came to fruition. So if you have any questions, we're here to answer them. It really was a result of the curriculum development and alignment process and looking at standards and where we were able to ensure that all of our students were hitting the standards that were required at every grade level. This allows us that confidence that each of our students are getting that foundation when they need it. And it still gives choice to our senior students in elective courses. So we feel like this is a good balance for both and really services our students that need that foundation, which is all.
Is this earmarked for a certain group of student that needs, or just more an advanced course is what I'm asking?
So this would be our foundational English 11 course for all students. We'd still run our honors course.
Would this be replacing an existing course or are we just revising the curriculum on that course?
Right now, we have elective courses that students can choose from in 11th and 12th grade.
Would this be optional or mandatory?
Mandatory course. And then we, yes.
So our reasoning for this is right now, our electives are kind of disjointed for the juniors taking them, whereas our standards for ELA are nine and 10 are grouped together, 11 and 12 are grouped together. An English 11 course would ensure that all students get those essential standards for grades 11 and 12. After the required English 11, they would have the elective courses to choose from for their final credit their senior year.
So just to give you a little more understanding of where we, and again, this is a long process. You guys are getting the short version. Over time in Spooner, we had, I don't know, 15, 20, just a crazy number of English courses. That sometimes they were taught, sometimes they weren't. And again, as you change staff, they don't even know what what the intent of those courses were. And again, we've done this revision of our curriculum, not only in ELA, but in every content area in the high school. So we've really taken a look at, our focus has been what what does a Spooner student need? So that's where they came in and developed, okay, so what what spells success for a for a Spooner student? Now, the good news is, is we have a block system. So literally, if it was their choice, a student could take eight English courses. So what we wanted to make sure is that they have a foundation, and really, that's three courses in itself. So they'd still have five options of other courses they could take, plus our our college-level courses that So again, it's just important to understand that, that there's plenty of options out there, but we want to make sure that every student has a good foundation in English.
Would we be dropping any courses on the upper end?
We, depending on how many seniors sign up for elective, some elective courses may be dropped off depending on interest. So if we have a group of three students sign up for a course, it wouldn't be offered. We would probably keep it on the railroad map for future years.
So with it? Would they have the option to elective? Or they're done, like they're juniors, they take English 11 plus electives?
Our elective courses are aligned with the 11, 12 standards, so they could take two electives, one or two electives junior year as well, either before or after.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask correlation to what was just presented from for, you know, the all the materials that would be going. So this presumably would follow in line and just smear kind of what's going on there.
Yeah, so it provides that resource for English 11, and it has a really good scaffold off of nine and 10.
Any additional questions? Do we have a consensus to move this forward to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Item P, discuss CISA 10 Shared Services Contract, Dr. Haslam.
So we come to the time of year where you consider a CISA 10 Shared Services Contract. And just, you know, a little background on that, we're not in CISA 10's boundary areas, but we rely on them for our distance education. We also are supported with the administration of the E-Rate Program, which we know is a very important program for our technology offerings here in the district.
Any questions? So do we have a consensus to move this to the regular board meeting for approval?
Yes.
All right. Item Q, discuss CISA 11 Shared Services Contract.
So certainly a longer list of items within that is that is our home CISA. What I would like to note is that as an administrative team and in the district office, we've gone through and really scrubbed down what we would seek to purchase for services for the next year. And as you'll see in your notes, we did eliminate a couple of things out of there. But excellent service from CISA 11. We look forward to continuing that partnership into the future with them.
Any questions on that one? Do we have a consensus to move this for approval to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes, excellent. Letter R, discuss Spooner Middle School yearbook contract. This is a geese friggin'.
Proposal here, she would like has to follow the same contract as before. She did contact Lifetouch, which is the other company, the competitor. They are $2 more per book, so she would like to just follow with what we have done in the past.
Any questions? All right, do we have a consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes, we're going to discuss filling vacant board position?
Yeah, just, you know, with Deb's, Deb Wilson, Mrs. Wilson's resignation, just, you know, a couple of considerations, policies you have in your packet. So Mr. Melton steps up as the as the vice president and functions as the board president. And we know that our timeline is until May, when we when the board has its annual organizational meeting. So and because Mrs. Olson was not in the final year of her term, the board will appoint someone to fill that position for one year. This time next year, that position will be on the general election ballot. So a couple pieces there. We know that we've been through this process not too many months ago, so would look for the board to just give some direction on us posting up that vacancy. You can see within the policy that it unfortunately, we're not able to just pull people off of tomorrow's election. That is a process that we have to go through. So just looking for your your approval to get that position posted up.
First, I would like to thank Olson for her years on the board. Good for them. That was great. And then I think, like we told the last one, I would like paper and on the website. Everywhere. Vacant.
I have one question, and it's going to be the person who's appointed will be up for reelection in April of
Next year.
Next year.
Yep.
So next spring, there's going to be rather than two vacancies, there'll be a three vacancy. One of those people will get a one-year term to finish, and then the other two people will get their full three-year term, correct? Because Deb normally would have been up for reelection in April of 2024. So we have to somehow make sure that there's two people up for reelection on 2024 instead of just one person up for reelection. So when we have that spring election next year, two of the people are going to be getting a three-year seat. One of the people is just going to get the balance of Deb's turn. Do I understand that correctly?
Jesse, you want to speak to that?
So that would be? So would we be posting that as you're going to run for a two-year term, a three-year term, and this person's going to run for a one-year term? Or is it going to be first, second, third, and the third person would get the one-year term?
Yeah, I can't I can't speak to that right now. That'd be something that we'd be sorting out, you know, as we get deeper into 2022 and prepare for 2023 elections. I do not know that. Now, at this point, you've got a vacancy that you will look to fill until election time next year.
And do we have a consensus of what Michelle brought forth in the paper? And we're looking at what, like a two-week window? Or is that ample time?
Yeah, yeah, sixty days, or you have to begin the process all over. So we'll, you know, look to complete that within those 60 days. You know, the window of time can be whatever you want it to be.
Post it for a couple of weeks at least.
Until the week of?
Yeah.
Do we have a consensus of that?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
All right, that's what we'll do.
All right, thank you. Item T, 30, 60, 90-day planning. Everybody had an opportunity to look that over. Any questions? If not, we'll receive and put that on file. Item U, financial update, Dr. Haslam.
So this is the update for February 2022. We had income of $7,81,635.30. And as you'll note, the large portion of that income through the January tax settlements, also a number of DPI claims and federal program claims that came through. Total total amount available, $8,305,98.60. Looking at expenditures, you had expenditures of $1,426,163.67. So the balance on hand at the end of February 2022, $6,878,934.39. Just to give you a sense of where we sat 12 months ago with that, you had income of $7, 7.2 million. Amount on hand, $9.9 million. And the cash on hand at the end of February 2021, $6,783,021.57. So smaller revenue this year compared to 12 months ago, more cash on hand at the end of the month.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All righty. All right, item V, approval of the vouchers. If you've had time to look those over, is there any questions?
I'm making a motion to approve as written.
We have the regular board meeting. Yeah, do we have a consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
All right. All right. So there's, what I'm going to need, a motion is to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility.
Make that motion?
All those in favor? Or a roll call vote?
Yes.
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 All right.
Dr. Haslam, these are the ones that were here.
All right, we're reconvening into open session.
Time now is 7:29. We met in closed session and took no action.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.